Welcome, everybody here. We'd like to begin the meeting with an opening ceremony and pledge of allegiance. We've asked the Santa Clara City Scout Troop 407. This is the Inferno Turtle Patrol. The troop for our pack 407 Weebloos Dan is going to give our flag ceremony and pledge of allegiance and then we'll turn the time after that to Jared wait for some opening comments. So we'll turn the time over to pack 407.
Color guard, attention. May the audience please rise. Scout salute. All others, please prepare yourself for the pledge of allegiance. Color guard, advance. Color guard, halt. Please cross the colors. Color guard, post the flag of the great state of Utah. Color guard, post the flag of the United States of America. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scout salute. Two. Color guard, reassemble. Color guard, dismiss. The audience can be seated. Scouts, at ease.
I'd you tell my father, we're grateful for this chance. We have to be together tonight in the city council meeting. We're very grateful for young men that just did this wonderful flag ceremony and pray that their pack will continue to flourish and do well. And these young men will continue to learn and grow to be good citizens and good examples for all those around them. We're grateful for a wonderful community, for the safety we enjoy, and for the chance we have to make decisions to make it better. We pray for thy guidance and say things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I'm glad we had a minute to kind of recover, guys. It's been a while. And I miss what you just did. But we're pleased to have you here. We're excited to have you here, and I want to hear from every one of you. We used to get scouts that would come to city council meetings. And working on merit badges and other things. We haven't seen any for over a year. And so it's exciting for me to have you here. What I'd like to do is ask each one of you to come up front, to come up to the podium and tell us who you are and where you're from or where you live. If you would, if you would be willing to do that for us, I'd appreciate that. And your name will get on the minutes. At some point in your time, you're going to need some of these things on the minutes to get some merit badges and some other things. And so let's get it started right. So let's start with your patrol leader. Assistant patrol leader. Just come right line up right behind him, guys, and you can just come to the mic one at a time and give us your name.
I'm Romney Graff.
Where do you live, Rodney?
Well, the street.
Just the town. Who's your mom and dad?
Brian, Jeff, and Ann Graff.
Awesome. Thank you for what you do.
My name is Jackson Mayer, and I'm from Ivan's City.
Is that your dad back there? Awesome. Thank you.
I am Obadiah Mayer, and I am from Santa Clara, Utah.
Great. Thank you. You did a great job conducting that court of honor, that flag ceremony.
I am Lincoln Butterfield, and I live in Santa Clara.
Is Adam your dad?
Yeah.
Nice. Tell him I said hi.
Okay.
My name is Grayson Hendrickson, and I live in Diamond Valley.
Great. Welcome.
My name is Hank Kirkland, and I'm from Diamond Valley, Utah.
Awesome.
My name is Ron Stauffer, and I'm from Ivan.
Well, you guys did a great job. I just want to tell you, we appreciate you. Les, come on up. Let's get you and Kathy on the minutes, too. These two show up at my house every once in a while and drive me into the front room.
I'm Leslie Muir, and I live in Ivan. I'm proud to be a leader.
I'm Kathy Ants. I live just down the street, and I'm proud to be a leader, too.
Well, you ladies do awesome jobs. Thanks again for your service, for your time, and hopefully we'll have you back once in a while. Thank you. Okay, citizen communication and appearances. We do have one for sure. Former Councilman Sizemore wants to talk about transit funding, which is a relevant topic. Ken, I don't know if you're aware, the county is trying to get the city to sign a 10-year agreement to
That's why I'm here.
Okay, let's hear what you got to say.
Out of some other things, it's good to see you all feel quite at home here, but it's good to be here and not there. I read with interest the idea that the county wants Santa Clara City to sign over 10 years' worth of transit funding to fund the line from St. George to Springdale. You all know that I feel pretty strongly about transit funding and the future of transit in our communities. And Santa Clara still sits in the middle of a growing urbanizing area. And when we watch what's happening around the Harmon's Corner and additional multifamily housing developing up in that area and what's happening down on the main road going through Santa Clara, it seems to me that it's pretty obvious that within 10 years, Santa Clara City is going to want to be able to determine if it's time to join into the regional transit system. And I think it's short-sighted planning to give away that opportunity for a decade. In a decade, it's highly likely that none of you will be sitting in seats you're in right now. And you're you'd be making a decision for council members and mayors after you that would probably just tie their hands more than I think is appropriate. So I just wanted to let you know, I really came to deliver Pinewood Derby kits to the pub scouts. So I saw they were on the agenda, but I thought while I was here, I would stand up and let you know that that's a very big concern. While I have the podium, I'm very happy to see the garden project working. I was there this morning helping harvest some beets. I'm still working toward some veteran involvement with the garden there. Still would like to get on that committee and make sure that that is all in place. And one other thing, I know your budget's coming up, and I know it's not on the budget, but someday before 10 years, you need to have some money in your budget to build a restroom at the cemetery. In my retirement, I'm visiting lots of cemeteries. And if you go up and down the state, most of the most well-maintained cemeteries have a restroom as part of the amenities at the cemetery. So it's something that I think y'all ought to be thinking about, maybe not this budget year you're doing your public hearing on, but it's a it's a need there, and I see it coming sooner than 10 years from now. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here again and visit with y'all.
Yeah, we appreciate having you. Just just so you know, council, I don't think council is ready to sign that agreement.
Well, I didn't think so, but I thought this would be a little bit of
We appreciate your input, for sure.
All right. Thank you very much.
And you're on the committee. They haven't had a meeting yet, but you're on.
Excellent. Thanks.
Okay.
I've got to get home and get the dinner out of them. I'm not staying for the public hearing. Sorry.
No worries. Thanks. Is there any other, anybody else here wants to address council tonight? Okay, we'll go into the conflicts and disclosures council. Does anyone have any kind of a conflict of interest that you would like to disclose relative to the agenda? I have three of them. Items one, two, and three, Rosenberg Associates has been working on those, and so I just need to disclose that to you. Has anybody else got any conflicts or disclosures? Okay, we'll go ahead and move into the consent agenda. There are no public hearings scheduled tonight, right?
No.
Okay, moving to the consent agenda, you have on the consent agenda tonight approval of the claims and minutes. The April 28th regular city council meeting minutes, the May 5th city council work meeting minutes, and the claims through May 12th, 2021. On the calendar events, we've got a regular meeting on the 26th and a work meeting on June 2nd. And the third item is to set a public hearing to receive public input on the Santa Clara City fiscal year 2021-2022 final budget. Set that public hearing for June 9th at 5:00 PM. Counsel, was there any questions on any of the items on the consent agenda? If there's no questions, I would look for a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Jared and a second by Lena to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any question on that motion? This is a money item. Roll call vote. All in favor, say aye. Ben?
Aye.
Lena?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Chief, did you have some introductions you wanted to take care of? Or did you just bring backup? Okay, all right. Let's do it. I mean, they could have a fire and have to leave, and we still wouldn't know who they are.
This is, yeah, this is actually Mr. Germain. He's here for that lease agreement that we've got coming up on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
We did, just since I'm up here, we did hire our seasonal wildland guys, so they're out in the field right now, just finishing up the day. But I'll have to bring them in for an introduction for those guys at the next council meeting.
Okay, appreciate it. And who's with him?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
This is one of the new wildland fires. Oh, cool. Great. Welcome, guys. Okay, going to item C1 under general business, consider amending the plat for Desert Village Town Homes Phase 1 by changing the name to Con Road to Settlers Drive and approve ordinance 2021-06. And this is not an amendment to the final plat, just an ordinance changing the street name, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Mr. Howell, I don't see Mr. Howell unless he's hiding behind Mr. Hall. Counsel, I don't know if we've talked about this. I know the staff has talked about this. I think the post office made the request to change the name of Tucon Road to Settlers Drive. This is in the Desert Village Town Homes Phase 1. And so Matt prepared an ordinance to comply with the county recorder's requirements to make that change. I don't know if there's any questions for Matt relative to that. If there's not, then I would look for a motion. There's no no homes are addressed off of it yet. So we're not affecting any residents who are in place. It got caught soon enough.
Mayor, I'll make that motion that we approve ordinance 2021-06, changing the name to Con Road to Settler Settlers Drive in the Desert Village Town Home Phase 1.
I'll second. Got a motion by Ben and a second by Jared to approve ordinance 21-06. Any question on that motion? This is an ordinance. Let's roll call. Ben?
Aye.
Lena?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. This item C2 is consider approval of a final plat for Desert Village Town Homes Phase 2 with 53 townhome units on 4.4 acres located east of Rachel Drive, east of Lava Ridge Elementary School, and north of the Harmon Store. Cole West Homes is the applicant. Mr. Nicholson?
Okay, thank you. This is a final plat, Phase 2, again, 53 units. I think Alan Hall's a project engineer here. Project engineer is here tonight. The preliminary plat was approved by the planning commission and council in June of 2020, and the entire project has 185 total dwelling units on 17 acres. Again, this is the Phase 2 final plat. And Brock, if you want to pull that up, do we have that on there?
Cristel.
Oh, okay.
Grab that.
On the so Phase 1 is underway. They're they're building the units. A number of those fourplexes, fiveplexes are under construction. The exterior materials include tile roof, two-tone stucco colors with band and pop-out features, and they all have an attached two-car garage. All the units are outside of the 100-year floodplain. The project amenities include a pool with bathrooms and small playground areas and pickleball courts. They will have an HOA to maintain the common areas and all the landscaping. Traffic access. There's two accesses off Rachel Drive. And in the Phase 2 area, the units back onto the Tucon Wash or lava flow wash and front onto a public street. Settlers Drive, the name changed, we just took care of. There's public trails are planned along both the Tucon Wash and lava flow wash. Settlers Drive is proposed to extend eastward to cross the wash and connect to Red Red Mountain Drive at some future point. The Phase 2 plat is compliant with the approved preliminary plat. Staff recommends approval. Planning Commission also recommends approval of this final plat for Phase 2. I don't know if you have any questions?
Questions for Bob, counsel? Thank you, Bob. Any questions for the applicant, counsel, or his representative? Any discussion? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the final plat for Desert Village Town Homes Phase 2 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Jared and a second by Ben to approve the final plat for Desert Village Town Homes Phase 2 as presented. Any question on that motion? Let's do roll call. Ben?
Aye.
Lena?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, counsel. Item number C3 is consider approval of a final plat for Heritage Point Town Homes Phase 2 located on the south side of Santa Clara Drive, west of Country Lane, extending to Lava Flow Drive. Austin Anderson is the applicant. It says Bob, but Cory's at the mic, so Cory?
Zoning's PD commercial. The general plan designation is Main Street Commercial. The approximate acreage is 2.8 acres for Phase 2 residential area. Alan and Alan Hall and Jared Bates with Rosenberg are the engineers. Final plat for this Phase 2 is for 27 townhomes at the east portion of the project site with frontage on Santa Clara Drive. Base 2 area is the 2.8 acres, as I stated. The entire project contains 55 two-story units on 5.47 acres for an overall density of 10 units per acre. The street are public, and the plat conforms to the approved primary plat. Two-story townhome units were approved for short-term rentals. The perimeter wall along lava flow drive and along Santa Clara Drive east of the the east half of the frontage was approved as a combination of masonry block with wrought iron railing on the upper three foot of the wall and got like a picture here of what that looks like. The privacy wall along the south property line was approved as a six-foot tall masonry wall. Along Santa Clara Drive, the commercial frontage did not need a privacy wall. That area will be reviewed when development is proposed for the commercial. The eastern portion where the townhomes back against Santa Clara Drive, the developer proposes the combination of three-foot masonry wall and three-foot wrought iron to top on top with columns every 20 feet. Landscape with trees and shrubs will be placed on the street side of the privacy wall. There are at least two street accesses to the site, one off lava flow drive and the second one off Santa Clara Drive. All units will be 20-foot deep driveways with two-car garages. The Phase 1 plat contains most of the project's amenities, pool and a clubhouse. But amenities are not shown on the plat. The developer proposes additional amenities in Phase 2, including a pickleball court area, but those are not shown on the plat, but are included in the site improvement drawings. There are future commercial area, the northwest corner of the project on Santa Clara Drive and lava flow. Also, a geotechnical report for the site has been prepared by the firm of AGC and was available for review of the city office by any interested persons. Most of that site is balsa lava. So the development has is proceeding very good, but very slow because they have to dig through all that lava to put in the infrastructure. No changes are proposed on the building elevation drawings, which were previously approved as part of the PD's own project approval. Planning Commission at the planning commission meeting, it was not clear whether the plans for the privacy wall were along the east frontage on Santa Clara Drive and planning commissions. And the developer stated that the cinder block wall without any aesthetic enhancements would not be adequate. Are they, the planning commission stated that they needed the same wall along lava flow along Santa Clara Drive. Austin Anderson clarified that plans for the privacy along Santa Clara Drive would be similar to the privacy wall along lava flow drive, that it would be a combination of masonry wall, as I shown you in the shown you in the on the plat with with the columns every 20 feet. With that, there's any questions?
Questions for Cory or staff?
The common area for units eight through 15, the kind of longer sections, are those going to be striped for like trailer parking or boat parking?
The
So it's quite a bit of space. Will it be paved or?
Are you talking about?
On the most eastern part?
Right here?
Yeah, all that.
I believe they're going to maybe stripe this longer portion. What it says on the final plat is this areas for the use of these units right here. But I think it was proposed that these would be striped for some kind of short-term rental plot, you know, trailers and boats and that that sort of stuff.
Okay.
They've also, you know, stated the commercial area until it's developed, they would use that for some kind of storage.
I have a couple of questions. For the units that that back east but aren't on Santa Clara Drive, adjacent to the empty lot, are they putting a wall along there also? And if so, is it a just a standard cinder block wall, or is it going to be the wrought iron to match the others? So the wrought iron will go on all three sides, lava flow, Santa Clara, and the east side?
It's up on top of about an eight-foot rock.
Rock wall.
Rock wall now, too, so.
Yeah. And then the is the association going to be responsible for maintaining the landscape strip between the sidewalk and the fence, the wall?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions for Cory, counsel?
I have one more question, but I don't know, mayor, if it's for you or if it's for Matt. Where this is a PD and where we approved it for short-term rental use, and they have to comply with the requirements of that ordinance as well. Does it matter that they haven't identified the amenities on the final plat, since that's the only document that's going to end up being recorded?
I don't think so. It's the amenities are located inside the common area. The the zoning has the amenities shown on it. The preliminary plat has the amenities shown on it, and the improvement drawings that the city's approved have the amenities shown.
Okay, I just didn't know if it mattered.
I don't think it. I mean, the final plat is more of the ownership transfer document. And so the ownership of the the hatched areas there is these units are sold and title is passed. This is identifying what you're actually buying.
Right.
The common area is owned in common by all of them, and so that as long as they're inside that common area, I think that's the bigger thing.
Okay.
Is that right, Matt? You agree?
Yeah, it is. On that, on that, a similar note or related note, I don't see that the common area is very well identified on this plat. And I, we probably ought to have that clarified a bit. I mean, you know, we have
It's just, it's the unhatched area is common area, but we could add a note saying it was common.
Well, it does have a, on the legend, it shows everything in white as common area.
Does it? Okay, I was trying to find that, and I didn't see it, but
Down in the lower right corner.
Yeah, the lower right corner there.
Okay, I see it now. All right. That's fine.
My only concern with that a lot of times is they always want to put an awning. They buy the property, then they come to the building part and want to put an awning in the common area, and I have to go back to the developer and get a letter from them saying, okay, does your CCNRs allow building outside the buildable path? So usually one letter from them to say yes or no covers the whole thing.
Any other questions, counsel? Questions for the applicant? Any discussion? Not, then I'll look for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make that motion and pull it up here that we approve the final plat for Heritage Point Town Homes Phase 2 as presented.
Second.
A motion by Ben and a second by Lena to approve the final plat for Heritage Point Town Homes Phase 2 as presented. Any question on that motion? Roll call, Ben? Roll call, Ben?
Aye.
Lena?
Aye.
Jarrett?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Passage unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Cory. Item number four, consider request for preliminary plat extension for one year for the edge of Grand Desert. Mr. Bundy?
So the developer requests a preliminary plat extension for one year at the edge of Grand Den Desert. It went to planning commission on January 9th, 2002 for amended plat. And then the city council on April 22nd, 2020. Code ordinance 16.12.04050, item one or item I. All, all states, all final plats and construction draws shall be repaired, prepared and approved within one year of city council approval of the preliminary plat. If, if it's not completed within one year, then it has to start over. Now, this development originally was approved January 9th, 2019. Then they came back one year, about a year later and amended it. And then, so that's where we're at, right? And the last time they amended it, the first time they brought it, it had a roadway going up the wash. If you can pull, we have a flat on that. Just, yeah, show you. So the original request, the, if you look up here on the screen, the preliminary plat was more in this location. And the amended moved it over to this location with these being one, two, three, four, five, seven residential lots and then a commercial type hotel area right here. The original preliminary plat showed the roadway coming up through here, which was approved through Hillside Review Board. When they came back for the amended plat, they proposed to bring the road, the main road around around this knoll of this hill there. At that time, we requested them to go back to Hillside and make sure that the contours here would be designed correctly and get additional approval and that the road dedication take place it soon as possible. So that's where it was left a year ago. I know the city would like to see that road dedication or right now we have a plat with no way to get there.
You're talking the one at the bottom of the hill?
Yeah, at the bottom of the hill right here is this where it ties on to the Sycamore Bridge.
That's the plat that council's approved. They haven't built the improvement, so it hasn't been recorded yet, right?
Yeah. And the water project that we're working on will tie in right here. This, this roadway right here, it's supposed to tie in right here to make that loop. Eventually.
Okay. Questions for the staff or anything else from the staff relative to this?
I guess just on a legality side or, I mean, this happens all the time, but are any, any issues? Really, it's kind of just a waiting game now and.
Matt, is there any, any legal issues regarding this? I know they have to come back to keep the preliminary plat active.
No, I don't, I don't see any issues if the council's okay with this. The main thing would be let's make a good record of what, what date the extension is to. I noticed in their letter, they asked for a year from the date of their letter. And if that's what we want to do, let's just make a record of it for the minutes.
Other questions, counsel? Is the applicant's not here, is he?
No, I didn't. I didn't see. I mean, on that, would it just be a, would, would we call it today's date or would we want to date it from the?
I think it'd be up to you. If you wanted to hold that original April date or set it today.
Yeah, it's up to you guys. I'd say let's just, whatever it is, just include it in your motion, just so it's clear.
Is there any reason we wouldn't want to do this? Or we shouldn't do this?
I mean, all the planning that the city has done and has been based on this preliminary plat getting followed through. So I I think it kind of changes things if you don't. It just makes them have to go back through the process again.
Again, all the, the hard stuff really comes into the final plat, all the engineering, all the utilities, everything that kind of amassed up right now, we've got to.
I mean, the only thing that the roadway is probably not going to change because it's really limited on how you get the roadways up there. So those two alignments that they've got shown are probably the only two options. Those are going to probably stay as they are. If they wanted to come back and amend their use, then they would, may have to go back, clear to the zone change to do that. And so right now you're just basically extending the entitlement for the use forward a year.
Yeah, and I would say we already went through the whole process of, you know, making sure that anything visible from Santa Clara Drive would look like a home and I felt like the developers met what the public wanted, so.
I think that's my concern of not approving it is having to go, having to go back through that. That's probably what they should have put on the letter. Our reason is to save you guys hours and hours of phone calls and emails.
And there has been some effort. The city actually owns a part of the roadway down at the bottom over through Williams. We made that exchange with the Williams family as part of Chapel Street Bridge. Run the water line over there to them. So the city's made some efforts to facilitate it. So I don't want to see it go away, I don't think.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good project and so it's going to take time.
I'll make that motion, mayor. You ready? Um, I move that we approve the request for a, an extension on the preliminary plat for the edge of Grand Desert. And the extension will go through May 12th of 2022.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Jarrett and a second by Ben to approve the request for the preliminary plat extension for one year for the edge of Grand Desert. It's extended to May 12th of 2022. Any question on that motion? See y'all in favor. Let's do roll call on this one, Ben.
Aye.
Lena?
Aye.
Jarrett?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Passage unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Item C5, thank you, Cory. Consider approving a lease agreement for wildland utility vehicle between Santa Clara City and CH Wildland Fire Support. Chief Hancy?
Okay, so what this agreement would be is a lease agreement for a, maybe Jeff, do you want to come on up? Since you're here. This is a, an agreement for a lease of a UTV utility vehicle. Mr. Jermaine was with us last year as a volunteer firefighter. He had this piece of equipment and was very useful for us. It went out, we were talking, it went out on what, 36, 36 fires in the county last year? And several of those, you know, obviously we're able to bill for and, and, you know, recuperate some money that way for it. So this, Jeff's since gone on to some other fire agencies within the county. So this agreement would be for the lease of that utility vehicle. There are a couple of things that with the one that's attached where we probably need to change is the date. I believe it said April 18th. That's when we first drafted this agreement. We need to change that date to the date that it's, if council decides to approve it. And then the amount would actually be, for business reasons, it needs to be $1 a month. So it'd be the lease term is nine months, so it'd be $9. Correct, Jeff? But, yeah, so any questions on that?
So for nine bucks, we get to use that? That's the cheapest fire apparatus I've ever heard of.
Really good deal, isn't it?
You've got any more in the yard, Jen?
So it's kind of, may I for a second?
Absolutely. Just state your, state your name for the record, just.
Jeff Jermaine. Tyrell Hanson and myself were sitting last year. Still winter time. I said, what would be fun to kind of do something different? And he goes, let's build a side-by-side apparatus. And this is actually listed as a type seven apparatus. There's, well, there is one more. We build another one. It's the only ones really around. Nobody has them. It holds enough water and it started, I think we got laughed at when we first started building it and then the first fires. It started working its way out towards the end of the fire season. We were going out on every fire. It could get to the top of the fire, to the head of the fire quickly to knock it down until we had heavier apparatuses or air supports come in. And I operated it with a couple other Santa Clara Ivans volunteers as well. And we went out, there was a lot of fires. And so when I moved on, you know, I, I've really grown to love the community and Santa Clara Ivans and the fire department and the chief and your assistant chief as well. And I said, I'm going to give this to you for a dollar a month. Let's just let you use it for the summer. Make sure you have insurance on it, take care of it and you can make money. It made quite a bit of money. And my, my plan is hopefully for it to make enough money this year and then maybe possibly next year to where they could take those funds, put it back into the wildland program to actually purchase and build one themselves. So they have it because it is something that's going to start taking shape in our country are these smaller apparatuses. Because they can get from point A to point B so fast and a lot quicker than an engine can. And it's less wear and tear on an engine as well. That's kind of where, where it kind of sits.
Yeah, just a plug for Jeff. He's been a great supporter of us over the years. He's donated equipment and his time and, and really helped us out and we've got a really good relationship there. So we appreciate him doing this for us.
Awesome. Do you make ladder trucks?
Need one of those.
So this is, do you have a pit, do you have a picture of this? It's a modified Can-Am is what it is?
Yeah.
How much water does it hold and?
So.
I'm kind of interested in.
Yeah, I should have attached a picture, but it's, it's a Can-Am side-by-side. It's got a little skid pack in the back. It holds just about 150 gallons. Okay. It's got a little hose rail on it, some hand tools. A little extinguisher, just a real quick attack type vehicle.
I was going to say you have a lightning storm come in and.
Try to drag him over to the mic.
The reason that Councilman Shakespeare is asking is he's looking for one for his, his spacious estate.
Yeah, I mean.
For private use.
I mean, just some calks on it, zero to 60 and 3.8. Can you modify it to hold a little more water in case things get out of hand on the river there?
We already modified the suspension on it, the clutches in it because of the weight it takes. And you kind of got to be trained in it. You can't just let anybody just jump in it and head up a mountain.
Do we have it in the budget to buy like eight of these or?
Nine bucks a year, sure.
Oh, at nine bucks a year, yeah.
Looks, looks just like a canoe.
Wow.
I wondered how some of those areas you even get to, like the big, big heavy's not getting into some of those, most of those areas.
No, and we found that out real quick with this thing that it was able to crawl up, you know, several remote areas. And the only vehicle that was able to get up there and kind of knock down some of the flame front and and give us some time to get the, the bigger apparatus up there.
I'm assuming you got a pump with it. If you had water, you could pump and fill up remotely and.
Yeah, yeah, it's got a pump, some hand tools. Like I say, you can have two people on there. That's, that's the max. But it, we found it'd be very useful. Really good thing. And that's why he's going for another one this year, you know, with enterprise, I believe.
Yeah, so I, this unit, I went ahead and we had a couple of problems last year with it. It was our first unit. We were trying to figure everything out. We put electric start on it because three fires, we got out to the fire and went to pole and the strap just came right out to start the motor, the pump. So we put, I had an electric unit put on it for them. Yeah, it's it's a, it's different, but now people are starting to really take a liking to what it can do. And the performance is unreal. I mean, we put, we took this into places. Yeah. Because if you take your crew and they have bladder bags and you're putting a 45-pound bladder bag saying walk up a quarter mile up into that fire at night because nothing else can get up to it. The time you get up there, you're pretty well spent and then you lose the five gallons of water. And now you're walking back down to get more. This side-by-side would fill up, take full bladder bags up into there to where the firefighter is staying on scene up there on that fire. And we're just replenishing the bladder bags, filling them right back up.
It's functioning like a tender.
It is.
Individual tender.
It is. And, but it's also there to put water as fast as it could to knock something down quick.
That's cool. That's awesome. Thank you, Jeff. Counsel, any other questions? Somebody jump on a motion or I'm going to, I'll, I'll pay for it out of my own pocket.
Good, mayor. Sorry, I, I should probably just say I have reviewed it. Jeff pretty much hit the key points that city's responsibilities are to, to ensure and maintain the equipment. And, and it's for an initial nine months, but it sounds like, you know, that if that works out, that it could be extended with another signed agreement. So it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate that.
Mayor, I'll make that motion that we approve the lease agreement for a wildland, wildland utility vehicle between Santa Clara City.
Change the date.
Oh, thank you. And sorry, CH Wildland Fire Support. We need a date, date changed to, to today's date, May 12th. And the fee is $1 a month for nine months. Thanks, Lena.
Second. They're fighting over the second. Motion by Ben, a second by Wendell. Counsel, this is a money item, no, not much. We need roll call, Wendell.
Aye.
Jarrett?
Aye.
Lena?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Great, thanks.
Be safe in it, chief.
Thank you.
And thanks again, Jeff. Appreciate that. Okay, reports, mayor and council reports. Ben?
Mayor, mayor, a couple of things. We had we had flood control authority this last week. We hadn't met. This is the first time we've met all year. There's a lot of projects, a lot of upcoming projects. We reviewed, went through the audit. All that was good. There's land acquisition, things like that, but no, things are, things are moving well and there's a lot of big projects coming up, so. On that, just a quick, a quick update. I mean, you can't, I just wanted to bring a few numbers just to give people the reality of lumber and building costs, but you know, we, we all lost our heads. Lumber 15 months ago was $380 a, a thousand board feet. And then in April, or not April, in October, it hit just a thousand and we all couldn't believe it. It's at 1359, a thousand board feet as of today and probably going up. And the reason why is because there's a housing shortage in the US of 3.8 million residential units that are needed now. We have a two-month inventory nationwide, so there's anyway, that just kind of give everyone a, where it's at. I don't, I, you know, I don't see things changing anytime soon, but a house that we bought lumber for 30 grand four years ago is costing us 100 grand today. Anybody? So that's the reality of where we're at and other than that, that's all I have.
And I'm assuming that new home contracts have got lumber escalators, those types of clauses. And I'm assuming that new home contracts have got lumber escalators, those types of clauses in them.
I think uh everybody's heard, a lot of these track builders aren't even taking contracts. And a lot of that is because they got burned so bad in the fall where they just said, well, uh, you put your name down. We're going to build it. You'll be on a message. I, I'm on a few with a few of the builders that A lot one fifty's going to be available, the home uh to bid on this Friday. And it's basically uh come bring your offer and we'll go with highest and best. So I think most builders, and I think everyone got burned a little bit on it, but I think most have escalation clauses or contingencies in there. It's hard to, literally when it hit, I mean, we kind of said, well, okay, we'll deal with it. And it certainly will wait, certainly can't go higher. And it went another forty percent, so. And I think it's still futures are still ticking up and just because they can't keep up and and you throw fuel on top of it and, and uh, you know, I think Canada sells a lot of lumber is mad at us over a pipeline. I think there's a lot of things that uh, I think Canada is going to hold us hostage a little bit till they can get that figured out. And that's going to be their negotiating point of that. But there's uh, it's interesting, I think. But again, I, I had an article come through yesterday that you know, people are like, it's, it's going to pop. And it was like, oh, quite the opposite. There were short four million residential units today with no, no end in sight. So eventually it'll crack, but I don't, I don't know when. I wish it did. But that's all I have.
Thanks, Ben. Lena?
I did not have any meetings at all the last few weeks, but to echo what Ben um is saying, I looked at some um existing cells for entry level housing in our community today. Um, and I was surprised, but not totally surprised to see that out at like Tuscany and Black Hawk, those units are selling for three hundred and eighty thousand dollars presently. So I ran a couple of quick calculations and if someone were to purchase that unit, put twenty percent down, that puts their P and I at about thirteen hundred dollars a month, that three percent on a thirty-year note. If you add their taxes and their insurance on top of that, it's generally not affordable for most people. And that's the entry level housing in our community. If they were to go FHA, it even makes it worse, which most newly married or young kids who are looking for that entry level housing typically go because they don't have the down payment to put down. Um, so I echo Ben's concern. I, I'm not sure how we fix that, but it, it's a concern. It's a big concern, so.
Thank you. Hey, will you give us a cheery report? That's two gloom and dooms. Brighten the mood.
Yes.
Thanks, Jared.
Um, just put a little anecdote to that, though. I have in-laws that, you know, a couple of years ago, probably just were looking for a townhome. And right now they're looking at trailer park units because that's all they can afford. So to see it change that much in a couple of years is pretty crazy, so.
Man, the good news is I was able to lease out the upstairs to a whole bunch of people nightly rentals. So should bring some revenue to the city. I'll let you guys know all the details, but I need you out by five o'clock every day. Yeah.
Um, well, I wanted to report on uh Shakespeare in the Park. I thought they did an excellent job. I went on opening night and it was very well attended and a great performance, so. Um, I think our app tax dollars were spent well on that. Um, I did, and we, when we spoke in our last meeting about public transit and how we could spend the money, I did look at the bill that allocated the, that sales tax revenue for public transit. And it was pretty vague on what was public transit is considered, to be honest. So I don't see why we couldn't spend it on a scooter fleet in our community. Um, or, or some other form of public transit, like we talked about. I'm a vehicle that's owned by the city that is available on call or something. So we probably need Matt to like dig into that a little bit more, but for my cursory look at it, it was, and I looked at all the definitions of public transit and cross references and nothing said it had to be a bus, so. And then I did attend a C E C meeting yesterday. Uh, everything's going really well with the station. The franchise fees that the C E C gets from T D S has been going down consistently. Was just so many people streaming now, but it's, it's settling out and um, things are going, going well there. And then I have a mosquito wave meeting tomorrow. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Jared. Wendell?
Uh, I happen to go probably to the shortest meeting I've ever been to. Western County Solid Waste District Meeting, fifteen minutes. And uh, we're in and out in fifteen minutes. Main reason they called the meeting, well, they normally have a meeting in May, but it was on Monday was to tell us who the new director, district manager is going to be for the waste district. And that's going to be Kevin Coons. Now, we, we just hired one about six months ago, but he quit about a month and a half ago. And uh, so they were looking for another one and this, the one that we'd hired before was just a young man. I thought he must been, when I first saw him, I thought maybe this guy's twenty-five years old, but I think he's in his thirties. But the new man is in his fifties. And there was one of the conditions of hiring him is that he's going to stay for a while. But he, he doesn't have any experience in waste management. He comes to us from Micron and has experience in that field. He's had twenty-eight years of leadership experience in that field. And uh, he looks like, like a good, good candidate and, and he wants to move here. He's, he's from Lehigh and that's where Micron is. But uh, he's going to be coming down, be down here on the twenty-fourth of May, start his job.
Cool. Well.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Um, mayor's association meeting. I mean, guys have probably been staying up on the COVID. There's eight patients in the, in the ICU as of Tuesday, or in the hospital as of Tuesday. But Dr. Ferguson told us the story about one of the deaths, one of the recent deaths at the hospital was a, was a gentleman who had put off getting his vaccine. Was supposed to go get vaccinated and he showed up sick and couldn't get vaccinated. And then he ended up passing away. Um, all of the deaths over there, um, no one who has been vaccinated has died in the hospital. If they've got their vaccine, they may still get sick, but none of them have, have passed away. And so they were really still strongly encouraging everybody to get vaccinated. Uh, Superintendent Ferguson talked about the mask and the no mask conflicts that they've had with parents. And finally, the school board um made the decision that masks were optional. Um, he said the kids seem happier. Um, it's unlimited attendance at the graduation events in a couple of weeks. Uh, Blodgent reported cases are continuing to drop. Um, we're less than a hundred per a hundred thousand people. Um, but the vaccine demand is also dropping maybe even faster than that. But eighty-five percent of our, our residents that are over seventy have been vaccinated, which he says is really happy about the fact that the most susceptible population has been vaccinated. The governor's restrictions are completely gone now. And uh, probably, I don't know if you guys saw that, I forwarded an email today from the doctor, Governor Cox is ending the three hundred dollar bonus unemployment thing in June. Um, following Montana's lead there. Um, we've got low unemployment, um, but a little slower grob, job growth going on right now. Um, but the unemployment insurance fraud is really problematic and, and job service is actually encouraging employers that when they have somebody make an appointment and then they don't show that they report them, the job service. Um, so that they can follow up and try and minimize the, the unemployment threat, fraud, um, that's going on right now. I reported they had a great Ironman event, two point two, twenty-six hundred athletes. Uh, one point four million viewers watched the event live on Facebook. Watched it live. So um, they're having, they had hospitality employment challenges for the athletes during the, the event. And I mean, hotels and restaurants are still having trouble filling and it really, when you have a major event like that, it really shows up. So there was encouraging people to do something. We had a report from the air quality task force. Primarily concerned with fugitive dust and, and Jay Sandberg from the task force in St. George City uh gave a presentation that basically their quality down here is, is really good. They've encouraged everybody to maybe look at St. George City's air quality ordinance and put it into place. So it may be something we want to look at and may possibly purchase a purple air monitor. You can get a purple air monitor for two hundred bucks and it'll do a real-time assessment of the air and establish a background. Um, so we may want to look at that going forward. It's pretty cheap. He said perception is very different than reality. A lot of people feel they see the haze. They think we have an air quality issue. When you look at the tests, it's not the air quality. Um, it's primarily the haze and the refraction in the atmosphere and, and those types of things that you're seeing. But if we do s- see problems, um, they've asked us to report it, so. Um, I had a meeting with the, the water supply agreement at the water district today and had a presentation from um the executive director, Southern Nevada Water Authority that kind of went through what they did in Las Vegas and Clark County about their conservation measures. Um, when they ran up against the, the limitation of the Colorado River allocation and, and what they were able to use and what they've done to lower their consumption um, to be able to, to meet their allotment. There's a lot of the things that we will probably be looking at in the future as things happen. Things like prohibiting turf in front yards, reducing it in backyards. Not allowing it at all in commercial industrial or in streetscapes, which could have a huge impact on us. So we'll have to look at that last one, but they uh, they initiated a moratorium on building until the landscape codes were enacted by local government. So I could see the water district maybe doing something similar here. Um, until all the communities kind of got together and, and put the landscaping codes in place. Reducing golf course usage, watering schedules. You've already got water cops. I mean, actually going out and monitoring usage times and amounts and giving you a couple of warnings and then slapping you with a fine. The AMI meters were a valuable tool in that because they actually watch the consumption on your AMI meter to determine if you're doing it in the right times of day. So it's, it's pretty amazing what they do, but basically the low hanging fruit is gone, is what he says. When it comes time to doing, if you're implementing compl- conservation measures to lower your consumption to match what your rights are. That means you developed all the available wet waters already in the pipe and you're still overusing. You have to get pretty harsh and so um that's probably coming down the line. It kind of gave me a little bit of pause and, and then we really need to focus on working with the water, the canal company and doing the outdoor use conversion. Now I drive around, I look and I see this grass, this grass on culinary. I don't see stains on the sidewalk. Is it on irrigation? I mean, we, we really need to be as proactive as we can in those types of efforts. We may want to look at our, at our development ordinance and some of our landscape strip requirements and minimizing any turf required in there or maybe eliminating. I mean, there's some proactive things that we can do. I think we need to start looking at to make it easier for the, as we go forward and these things get forced upon us. Incentive programs, community outreach and education. Vegas is in an interesting position because they're, they've lowered, they've made a uh, one point five billion dollar investment lowering the intake from Lake Mead. Their new intake is about twenty feet below the dead pool of Lake Mead. Dead pool means there's no release. It's the amount of water that's in the reservoir when they're not releasing. So they're not generating power. They're not doing any of that stuff. It's, they're twenty feet below. So they're, they can, the wet water will be there for them to pull out. But um, they spent one point five billion on that infrastructure to just upgrade that intake. They've got two intakes now that are up out of the water. So they're on this new one that's down under the water and it was extremely expensive for them. They pay a monthly infrastructure cost every connection down there. Residential connection is twelve dollars a month. We pay a dollar seventy-five on ours.
To the regional water?
Well, that dollar seventy-five regional water infrastructure cost, they're paying twelve bucks a month to recoup the bond that they had to put in place to make that improvement. Um, they have the four-tiered grade down there that start about a dollar thirty thousand, gives you the first two thousand and then it graduates up to over five dollars a thousand. For super large users are paying, you know, five bucks a thousand for them. Cost them three dollars to treat the reuse water and return it. They have a deal. It's kind of a unique deal and they can do it down there. Every gallon that they reuse and discharge back into the lake, they get credit for it. So it's as though they'd never used it. So if they discharge eighteen million gallons to the lake, that's another eighteen million gallons they can take out because they've already pulled it out as part of their right. Cost them three bucks to do that per thousand to, to treat it, to release it, to pump it back into town. But it, it gained them quite a bit of, of flow. Um, right now, the wastewater um plant is discharging. Most of the water is discharged back into the Virgin River that comes down there from the sewer. They take it through, through the first two stages and then they discharge it. And I had an answer for Denny's question. There's not a, there's not a prohibition on Santa Clara City asking St. George for our reuse water or our sewer bar, water back. But we have to pay to treat it to the next level where we can put it back out. And we have to pay for the pipeline and the pump station to deliver it up to us. And so the cost to bring that water back up here would be fairly high, but it, it's an option. So there's not something that prohibits us from asking for our money, our water back, but we have to go down there, pick it up, treat it and get it back up here. So that's something that we can put on the, on the, on the list of options when we start talking about it, but that'll be fairly expensive to do that. It was a, it was a really interesting meeting. I'm getting copies of their slides and maybe we can bring it to a work meeting in the future. They uh, they spent a lot of money on the water development down there and they've managed to keep up. I, Nevada only got like one, one point one five percent of the Colorado River allocation. Super low percentage of that total water in the, in the Colorado River compact got allocated to Nevada. And they've done some interesting things to make that water go as far as they can to facilitate the growth that you've seen in Las Vegas. So anyway, interesting meeting, some, some stuff that'll definitely be on our plates one of these days. Um, we start talking about that, so. Yeah, I think that's all that I had. Brock, anything?
Well, let me add about the purple air. We actually have two monitors.
Oh, do we?
We've purchased them. They haven't been installed yet. We, we have received them, but they haven't been installed, but we do have two of them. We're going to put one down here in the valley and one in the heights, so.
That's awesome. I think it's good for us to get it, just have baseline readings. So, because we're kind of on the, is it the windward side? The upwind side? And so we get, you can look at our readings and it's fairly clean on this side. Hasn't been disturbed by any construction sites or anything like that going through town. And the one that St. George has is on the other side. So it's measuring all of that buildup. I've always said that a lot of our haze comes from that way. It's, we don't make it. It's delivered to us. And that'd be good to have some baseline on that. So thank you. I appreciate that. Anything else, Brock? Matt, anything for the council before we go to executive session?
Nope.
Okay. Anything from chief? You didn't, weren't here to give a report last time? You got anything you want to add to the written one we got? Awesome.
On the enforcement of the trailers and parked vehicles, we continue to pay attention to that uh on your, on your letter. If somebody's got something specific, we can go out and look at. But we have a pretty liberal parking ordinance. And so we're trying to deal with the unregistered vehicles or the junk. We've done, we, we've cleaned a lot of that out, but as far as people parking their trailers and for, you know, if they're. for, you know, if they're using them for work and stuff, I'm looking for guidance. I'll do whatever you want me to do there. But I think that we, we're taking a more patient approach. We generally, what we'll do is we'll find a vehicle, we'll knock on the door, talk with the folks, let them know you need to move those vehicles. And we're finding some of them, you know, some of the complaints are really private property issues, not so much parking. But there are, there's still plenty of trailers out there. I don't know if we want to be putting parking tickets on all of them. But I, but if we have a specific complaint where it's a safety issue, we'll respond immediately and deal with it. So just so you know, I responded back.
I forwarded your response back to.
Yeah, I don't, because when he, when this individual complained, we went out there and, and it wasn't in his neighborhood. It was kind of around the corner. And we sort of dealt with that. So that's sort of the feedback. We are paying attention to that.
I appreciate it.
We had Jessica Bate. We sent her to training for a week. It's called Hal Week. And believe me, it's tough. It's a SWAT training. They had forty people show up, twenty-seven graduate. One department sent six people and they all left after two days. And she was voted by everybody as the number one cadet in the class. Really an honor for us. She's really tough. And and she just recently received her master's degree and Jaren Studley just graduated from Dixie with his bachelor's. Those are quite accomplishments. I'll be bringing them before you here pretty soon. But we're still out there moving along pretty good. So you have any questions? And I'll hang around for you.
I'll email you.
Sure, sure.
Any questions for chief?
That's a good thing.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. And you guys got anything for tonight? Update counsel on? Dustin's grabbing the mic.
Go for it.
Wanted to make you aware of a road closure next week on Gates Lane from Sycamore to Santa Clara Drive. The contractor doing the waterline P C I for us out there. They need to do a tie-in and put a P R V in and a vault right in that intersection. So we'll be detouring them around. We're gonna put a signboard out there this weekend, alerting all the residents. And should take them probably about three days.
So they'll have to.
I was gonna advertise that on our website.
They'll have to use Chapel Street. It'll be the only access out there.
Yep. That's all I have.
Brad?
The T N E that they did for the shooting range, the formal report isn't out, but I got the preliminary report. There were no plants found in the whole two hundred and seventy acres, but they did find some turtles. So I'm waiting for the report to come in. Just a quick update on irrigation converting culinary to irrigation. The parks crew and Dustin's water crew, we got Black Rock on irrigation this week. We had a pump company come out and service our filters at Canyon View, Goobler and the cemetery. We're ready to convert the cemetery over, but we had a defective switch. So they're ordering a new switch. So as soon as that's done, it'll be done. And we're trying to locate the water line that comes from the back street for irrigation for the streetscape. As soon as we get that, we'll locate that and we'll, we'll order the filter. We're just trying to make sure we get to size it, size the filter the right size. But we are moving forward on it.
Great. That's good news. Thank you, Brad. Will that convert the Rosenloch field as well?
Yes. Yeah, it's all tied into the street. The only thing it doesn't do right now is Heritage Square.
Was that irrigation water stained headstones?
You know, we've been using it at Goobler and Little League for quite a while. And, and we did have that problem at the cemetery a number of years ago, but we don't notice any staining of the sidewalks or any, any significant problems. So I don't know if that was an isolated incident a few years ago where maybe they were doing something upline, but I, I don't believe it'll cause any significant damage.
Okay. Any questions, counsel for the staff? All right, we'll go ahead and excuse the staff. And I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss the competence.
Character and professional competence of an individual.
What he said.
Some of it. Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into executive session. Is there any question on that motion? I'm gonna do roll call, Wendell.
Hi.
Garrett.
Hi.
Lena.
Hi.
Ben?
Hi.
Okay, we'll give Chris a few minutes. Thanks, staff. I'll get with you tomorrow.